John, can you call the roll please for the Plan Commission zoning board of appeals meeting of January 7th, 2025?
Chairperson Lyman's.
Here.
Commissioner Benazia.
Oh, February 4th. Right, sorry. We run.
All right, Chairperson Lyman's.
Here's.
Hi, Commissioner Benazia.
Here.
Commissioner Billingsley, Commissioner Slattery, Commissioner Henkin.
Here.
Commissioner Casbrick.
Here.
Commissioner Charazas is absent, so you have six members present, you have a call.
Thank you. Everyone join me please in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I have no comments only, and I do know what day it is, and just was looking at the wrong people. Um, is there anyone in the audience who's here to speak tonight about an issue not on the agenda? The one will move on to approve the draft minutes of January 7th, 2025, and we'll be approving the latest copy that was sent at 8:30 this morning. Is there a motion? Motion by Hannah, second by Brad. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Abstention. Lyman's and three of us.
Okay. More ayes, zero nos. Three ayes and zero nos, I'm sorry.
Abstentions. Okay, now moving on to the agenda, we need to call, I need a motion to go into public hearing of case PC 2506, the comprehensive plan amendment of 1952 Franciscan Way, MSA Properties and Management Group. Is there a motion? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? John, can you give us some background? Be sworn in and give us some background.
Or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the testimony about the gift shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing less than this.
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the petitioner is MSA Properties and Management Incorporated. They are the property owner of 1952 Franciscan Way, which is located in the Franciscan Way Shopping Center at the northwest corner of Route 59 and North Avenue, as you can see up on the screen. The property, right now, it is zoned in the B2 general business district, and on the city's comprehensive plan, we indicate, or the plan indicates for it to have a land use designation of corridor commercial. The property owners, MSA Properties and Management Incorporated, which are present this evening, they purchased the property several years ago. They have been marketing this property for commercial purposes. They have not had any luck. It has remained vacant since the shopping center was developed in 2002. This property has no frontage on Route 59. It has no frontage on North Avenue, and it really doesn't lend itself well for any kind of commercial development. It has virtually no exposure on these two, these two are two commercial corridors of Route 59 and North Avenue. So the petitioner has petitioned the city to rezone the property from B2 to a residential district to R6 multifamily. And prior to that, also a petitioning to amend the comprehensive plan, which, as I mentioned on our future land use map, indicates a commercial, and so they're proposing to amend the plan to show it as multifamily residential. Um, so as I mentioned, this location, it's, it doesn't lend itself well to a commercial development. Um, we, the city did do a market study in 2017 that indicated that to support more commercial in the area, that additional residential units would be necessary. So this location would be better suited, in the opinion of staff, to serve as residential versus commercial. This does also help to bring in more housing and dwelling units into the community, uh, which the city is actively pursuing. Um, so we do have a later this evening, the next public hearing is for the actual rezoning of the property, uh, or request to rezone the property from B2 to R6. Prior to that, though, is this public hearing to make a determination to reclassify this property from, as I mentioned, commercial to, to residential. So here you can see the, um, future land use, um, map shows it as a corridor commercial, and what is proposed would be multifamily residential. So, as I mentioned, we do have the petitioners here this evening to speak about the, the desire to, to rezone this to commercial, um, and answer any questions from the Plan Commission, and at this time, I can also answer questions from the Commission.
Maybe this is just a procedural thing, John, but why do we have to do both?
So it is two separate requests, so it is two separate cases. The first one is the public hearing on the comprehensive plan amendment, and then the second one is the actual rezoning, um, for the.
So it's like the city is doing the first one, and the petitioner is doing the second one?
Yeah, partially, yes. They're, they're requesting this amendment, but, um, it is, it's, it's the same topic, so, you know, we, we wanted to include background to both, uh, both petitions.
Um, does anyone in the audience wish to speak to the Plan Commission about this issue? If so, please come forward to the podium, and could you please state your name and address, and then raise your right hand and be sworn by the clerk.
My name is Moser, I'm representing.
This one you're about to give shall be the truth.
Basically, we tried it on this land, different approaches, but finally that it is the only way we can value the land, or we can get the value of that land, providing more, uh, population in this area. So it benefits to the tax purpose, city, water department, and there's no, we tried it different office carnivals and worked out for the price point of property that we bought it last time, the commercial. That since we don't have a burn age of 59, that was the setting back being a part of the involvement of the real estate, but is the only, then I became an opposed to John, and he likes that idea, and he has plans and everything.
Now we talk about that stage, um, in the next public hearing.
Yeah.
About the actual rezoning and what will go there. Does anyone have, um, any questions about the changing the map?
My only question is, he's been here before, am I correct?
Yes.
So he did have him here. Okay, so I'm not thinking that I'm missing something. I know Franciscan Way pretty well. My sister-in-law worked at the nursing home there, and I knew the other person down at the other nursing home, uh, the one down the street. Uh, you guys, are you in part of that agreement for Franciscan Way because you're on that strip? Because I know that they share in the expenses for everything that happens there.
Yeah.
As far as, you know, whether or not the road needs repair for snow.
Yeah, we go to farmer association, then we find, we divert that.
Yeah.
To the city.
Yeah.
Compliancees to them.
What is different than what we're doing now compared to when he was here last time?
So that was for a text amendment that they had, um, they had petitioned the city for to lower the square footage requirement for dwelling units in an R6 district. So previously, it was 5,000 square feet of area was needed per dwelling unit in R6, and it's been lowered to 2,000, um, square feet.
But if this was commercial, oh, what would be our residential matter if this was a commercial property?
Well, for them to.
Or at the time, it was a residential.
No, no, it's, it's, it's currently zoned, uh, commercial.
Okay.
And so they are proposing to rezone it to residential in anticipation of constructing a multifamily, um, facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would have thought that would have been the first thing they did, then go to the residential they asked for.
I think they needed a certain density to.
Yes, correct.
Six units, I think, is what you're doing.
Twenty-four units.
Yes.
Okay, okay, now it makes sense. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Concerns? Remember, it's in the public hearing that was the only thing where we can really ask questions and get the answers. We need to make a decision. Okay, thank you so much. Does anyone else wish to address the Commission regarding this issue? PC 2506? Questions from the commissioners before we close the public hearing? Nope. Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing, to close public hearing for PC 2506. Is there a motion?
Oh.
Mr. Slattery moves. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The public hearing is closed, and we'll move on to the agenda to talk about, um, reviewing recommendation and a motion regarding the comprehensive claim amendment. I get staff recommends that the Plan Commission pass a motion recommending approval of the proposed comprehensive claim amendment. Is there a motion? Second?
Oh.
Second, Billingsley. Um, is there any discussion? If not, John, when you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Benazia.
Aye.
Commissioner Billingsley.
Aye.
Commissioner Slattery.
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin.
Aye.
Commissioner Casbrick.
Aye.
Chairperson Lyman's.
Aye.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
We need a motion to go into public hearing for, um, his PC 2505 zoning map amendment in 1952 Franciscan Way, MSA Properties and Management Incorporated. Is there a motion?
Oh.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. Once again, John, we'd be sworn in and give us some background, please.
You sound, we swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the testimony about the gift shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing less than this.
I do. Thank you. Okay, so this, um, again, this is the petitioner for this request is MSA Properties and Management Incorporated, owner of 1952 Franciscan Way, uh, looking to rezone the property from B2 general business district to R6 multifamily, uh, R6 multifamily residential. Uh, purpose of the rezoning would be for the petitioners proposing to construct a three-story, 24-unit, uh, multifamily condominium building. It would just be a single, uh, facility, or single building. Um, so in the B2 zoning district, this type of use is not permitted, so the petitioner is seeking this residential, uh, zoning district to be able to construct the multifamily facility condominium. Uh, we do have the petitioner present this evening to answer any questions from the Plan Commission, and I can also answer questions from the Commission. I just want to, uh, point out too that staff is recommending approval of the zoning map amendment from B2 to R6, and has drafted findings of fact for consideration by the Plan Commission that are found on page two, uh, of the staff report.
Any questions for John? Once again, does a petitioning of want to come forward, be sworn in, and offer any testimony and answer any possible questions? Please. So once again, your name, your address, and be sworn in.
So BP, uh, nineteen.
Swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the testimony about the gift shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing less than this. Thank you.
So, are there any questions about um, the purpose? Seems like a good idea, I think.
Thank you.
Any questions for John? I want to remind the Plan Commission that we do have to agree to all the findings of fact that I listed on page two, and is there any discussion regarding the finding of facts? Again? I just have one general question, John.
Yes.
Do we have any requirement for affordable housing developments?
We would, I, you know, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, the, the city itself does not have an ordinance that requires, um.
Unfortunately. Okay. Just reading this, I'm just curious. Not applicable to this situation, just wondering. And if not hearing any questions or any, um, further concerns, can we have a motion to close the public hearing? And, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed, and so we'll go into the, um, discussion and review and recommendation of the zoning map amendment. To, um, the fact and approve the proposed zoning map amendment. Mr. Mr. Billingsley, did I hear you second, Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
So isn't there another building that's going to be built on the other side of 64? Kind of like nearby.
Um, that's down the road.
Oh, it's much further west. Uh, yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's actually just off the screen. Um, Redwood Apartments, uh, was proposed and approved.
For a level.
Yeah, the, the townhome style apartments. Hmm.
Again, you know, I'll just remind, I, I like it because it's a way for seniors to stay in place. You know, it's another, it's another option for condos close to services and everything up there, so I, I think that's good, you know? Plus you have that option, too. If there's no further discussion or comments, John, can you call the roll, please?
Sure, Commissioner Billingsley.
Aye.
Commissioner Slattery.
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin.
Aye.
Commissioner Casbrick. Commissioner Benazia. Chairperson Lyman's.
Aye.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
So what happens now, John?
So now both of these items will go on to the Development Committee next Monday, uh, in this room at, uh, six o'clock, uh, not seven o'clock, so six o'clock in this room, Monday, February 9. Uh, nope, you can, you can take off if you.
Thank you. Be on it.
And I'm sorry, it's Monday, February 10th, not February 9th.
It's something in the air. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Um, we, recommendation of his PC 2504, a minor subdivision, 155 Spencer Street, um, David Sabathne. It's David's birthday today, I saw, so he's not able to be here. He wrote us a letter. Respected Commissioners, the subject property being subdivided was configured over many years ago without regard to actual use. Five separate property identification number pins with one of them 55,000 square feet and totally landlocked with no access. Another 14 feet wide, assuming the reservoir of the vacation of a previously platted alley. This subdivision will finally correct the actions of the past and create three lots. One on nearly one half acre with an existing home built in 1896. One will be one half acre lot, in my opinion, is perfect for a single family home. And the final lot, 30,000 square feet or two-thirds of an acre, where I will build a 2,300 square foot ranch home with hopes for me and my wife to live out our remaining time. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration, respectfully, David and Diane Sabathne. So, can everyone see where this is? Is there any comment or question? I asked John earlier why this wasn't a public hearing, and it's because it's just living property, re-dividing property. It's not a PUD or anything like that, that we would normally see in a public hearing. Are there any questions for John?
So what are we subdividing? Just a 322? Eighteen, I think, and nineteen, is that what it is, or?
So there are five parcels that are, and I might point here, this doesn't work on here, but there are five parcels, um, on this overall property. There's three on just north of Spencer Street. There's one large one that's kind of in the middle of the overall property, and then there's a a parcel that is along Parker Avenue. Um, so essentially, what the subdivision will do is it will almost, uh, shift the, the lot lines. It'll consolidate those parcels, so there will just be three parcels, three lots, um, that will all be buildable. Lot one, which is off of Spencer Street, and it's to the east, uh, that has an existing home located on it, and then lot two, which is.
So that's that white home that's in this?
That's correct.
Okay, just.
And then.
I, I wish they would have done it here so you could kind of see, because it almost looks like the way they have the blue line there, they're kind of cutting it off.
Yeah, and that's an old lot line.
Yeah, yeah, so go ahead.
So, and then lot two, uh, to the west, that, uh, will, will be, um, plotted for a new home, and then lot three to the north, uh, same thing, so that's the remaining portion. All this property does have the ability for two additional homes on it, and, and addition to the existing home, but with, um, this, the subdivision shifting these lot lines, it'll just clean it up, so there's not those five tax parcels that are on the property.
Consideration of concerns or questions? If not, entertain a motion for recommending approval of the proposed minor subdivision. John, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Benazia.
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin.
Aye.
Commissioner Casbrick.
Aye.
Commissioner Billingsley. Commissioner Slattery.
Aye.
Chairperson Lyman's.
Aye.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries. This will also go to the Development Committee next Monday, February 10th at six o'clock, uh, right here in this room.
June, the year of the reservation, this case concede 2508, plan of dedication, SEC Town Road and Forest, City of Russia.
Yes, and we have a special guest this evening. We have Dave Shaw, who is the Assistant Director over at Public Works. And, um, what is being proposed is a platted dedication for the property at the southeast corner of Town Road and Forest Avenue. The city is going to be resurfacing and reconstructing Town Road, and as part of this, the, these three lots that are at the southeast corner of that intersection, they are owned by the city, and so the city is going to dedicate these city-owned lots to public right-of-way, so this will ultimately become a, um, detention basin or, for the, um, for the road reconstruction. Uh, so I do have Dave present this evening to kind of speak more about if there's any questions on the actual Town Road resurfacing reconstruction project, but essentially with this, uh, plaid a dedication, doesn't require a public hearing, but the Plan Commission, uh, is just to confirm that this does, this plaque does meet the subdivision regulations code, which staff has reviewed and checked and confirms that it does, so staff is recommending, uh, the Plan Commission recommend approval of the plaid a dedication.
So it's going to become a detention basin, actually?
It will be worse, but yeah, I'll let, I'll let Dave speak to that.
Uh, not that I'm going to understand this, but try, yeah, please, yeah.
Thanks, John. Uh, my name is Dave Shaw, the Assistant Public Works Director, and I'm working on this project, we're working on this project, the city has received some, uh, uh, $1.7 million worth of grant funds for it, so it's going through a lot of, uh, I got approval, the Northern Transportation approvals. As part of this, uh, this, the three city-owned lots, uh, is required to be dedicated for transportation use. Uh, basically, uh, it doesn't really show here, but, uh, there's a, uh, it's, uh, there's a, I'm sorry. Over that outlets into this area, uh, and to be, so we're the, as part of the project, um, Town Road between Illinois 38 and Forest Avenue is being reconstructed with a left turn lane for the southbound movement, and a through lane and a right turn, uh, so, and, uh, basically, we, we surfacing from Forest Avenue all the way up to Washington Street. Uh, so there's a, uh, Klein Road, or Klein Creek, uh, Crest Creek, my apologies, Crest Creek kind of outlets into this area, and goes around and then underneath 38, essentially, so, uh, as part of this, uh, 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 with the, uh, the use of the federal funds on this project, uh, were required to dedicate these three parcels as, uh, uh, for transportation use for, uh, competent compensatory storage base. It's for basically management.
Has there been flooding in the area before?
Uh, so, I, I believe there was a history, maybe. I, I don't, I don't know exactly the year, but I think it, the, the roadway overtopped, um, so, but other than that, hasn't been much, uh, uh, flooding concerns.
Any questions?
So the water is currently flowing through the property, it's the natural place to put this detention.
Yep.
City currently owns the property?
Yes, the, the three lots, yes.
Were they empty?
Yeah.
Are they essentially unbuilding?
Yeah, yeah, it's just basically.
Yeah, because the water.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can see you have two detention areas, one in the wooded area down closer towards Roosevelt, uh, and then the other one behind the building. It looked like detention areas at least, and some of the water must flow. Does it go, does the water go south? East, or does it go into that big marsh that looks like?
So it goes into the big marsh at the.
That's to the left.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then it, it kind of, uh, no, to the, to the right of the stream.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, this big marsh, okay.
Yep.
So it goes underneath where the cars are parked.
Yep, and then it'll go underneath the, uh, uh, there's a culvert that kind of, uh, carries that water underneath Illinois 38.
Okay.
Yep.
Steve, went all the time, dry or what's?
Yeah, so there's going to be some na- uh, native plantings, there's going to have, uh, they're, uh, uh, suitable for, you know, white area.
Yeah.
There, there's going to be some wetland plants in there, uh, to mitigate some of that, and that's part of the, uh, uh, county stormwater requirement as well, so.
Surprise, our district didn't want this.
Usually they want any land they can get out there.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming out at night to let us know. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
If there's no further questions or discussion, can we need a motion to, um, recommend the approval of this? Is there a second? You call the roll, John.
Commissioner Slattery. Commissioner Henkin.
Aye.
Commissioner Casbrick.
Aye.
Commissioner Benazia.
Aye.
Commissioner Billingsley. Chairperson Lyman's.
Aye.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries, and this will move on to the Development Committee next Monday, February 10.
So any dates or petitioning reports?
Um, so last month, we did have, um, two items on the agenda. They were the Crusher Special Use Amendment, which was approved by the City Council, and also zoning text amendment allowing donation bins. Was a slight change made at the Development Committee with that zoning text amendment. Um, staff was originally proposing to allow donation bins in institutional, industrial, and commercial properties. It was expanded also to include it at, uh, multifamily, um, properties, and if there's a donation drive taking place in compliance.
Good eye.
Um, and then also on, on the agenda that was continued to this month was a special use permit for Chicago, Chicago Motor Cars for a, a car dealership at Mosaic Crossing. That special use request has been rescinded, so they are no longer seeking, um, they are no longer seeking operations at that location.
Oh, but, um, they're not going up there?
Uh, not anymore. Rescinded that, um, and then we'll have the. Rescinded that. Um, and then we'll have the zoning map, uh, update at next month's meeting in March and, um, that's all I have, uh, for updates.
Question on the crusher. I've been here long enough. Uh, did we have, I know that they said they're going through, um, dispute or something, I read.
Yeah, probate.
Probate. And is that because they're having problems with the other siblings or what? Or how do, how do we know they're having problems with probate? Because that's been pushed off almost ten years.
So.
It was many years before I even came here and I know it continually seems like, well, we're going to do the, they didn't, you know? And when they finally did a portion of it, it looks so much better. If you drive down there and see where they, because before, if I drive in there, it was all gravel. Now it's paved, so that's much better.
Yeah. So the owner, uh, of the crusher, which was, he, he passed away. And so, yeah, now there is, um, it is now in this probate, um, essentially in court, there's legal proceedings with it. So we were contacted by their attorney, um, that it's going through this process. So the, the property was, was placed in violation for not being in compliance with the special use permit. And, uh, so when it went to adjudication.
Was it, which it was four or five years ago when we first started with them.
Yeah.
And that had already gone five years. So it's been a long road. I was just wondering on where that was.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Can you give us an update? I, I read in the paper that Redwood, that the forest preserve is now suing for the land that the Redwood Development is going on.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have much information. I don't know how much I can speak to that right now.
Court, yeah.
If the district wasn't all over that, they're usually you know, plant up that's anywhere near contiguous to what they already own, they're, they're all over.
Um, if there's no other further business or questions? And now I've seen a motion to adjourn. And our next meeting will be?
Tuesday, March fourth.
Tuesday, March fourth.
Oh, make motion to. Ultimately.
All right, you are adjourned.